Welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, June 18th. And Dave, would you please go ahead and roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Perks.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember McColl.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, I was searching a few things this afternoon on the Internet and found from the Chamber of Commerce, this is not the Pullman Chamber of Commerce, this is the, and it's not the US Chamber of Commerce, but Pullman has been ranked the best Washington city to live in by the Chamber of Commerce. Pullman won Washington's top live-in thanks to the lush natural surroundings, strong agriculture tradition, as home for the International Headquarters for Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories and Washington State University. Pullman boasts of an affluent and well-populous, according to the Chamber of Commerce. Redmond, Issaquah, Sammamish, Kirkland rounded out the top five. That's right, we're ahead of Bill Gates area in Redmond. Spokane, if you're wondering, ranked 11th. Seattle ranked 12th. And to establish the ranking, the Chamber of Commerce ranked a total of 2,509 qualified cities, those with populations above 25,000, and had enough data for analysis by five different factors, and they include employment, number of establishments, median earnings, housing, owner-occupied housing with mortgage, and monthly housing costs, quality of life, work commute, poverty levels, education, percentage of bachelor's degree, and health, and they've looked at obesity ratios. So, Washington is said to be a great city to live in, but Pullman is number one. Also, because we're also number one, we also have a great police department and a great fire department. And so that's my transition because as part of the 2019 summer reading program, young children, their families, caregivers are invited to have a joint, the guest readers for the Pullman Police Department, the library, this Thursday, from 10:30 to 11:15. You can hear the police officers read their favorite books, share that time with you. And yes, there is equal time because the firefighters get in there too and read as well, and the mayor reads as well. So, anyway. Some more announcements. Join WSU Pullman, City of Pullman, and the local safety agencies for the Fourth Annual WSU Pullman Community Safety Fair. That'll be this Saturday from 10 to 2 at the Brawlsford WSU Visitor Center. And Pullman's Fresh to You Farmers Market is open on Wednesdays, that's tomorrow, from 3:30 to 6:30. And recently, we've had some awards given out and some great accomplishments. First of all, Mike Heston, our Fire Chief, would you make a presentation tonight to
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, recently, or last, earlier this year, I received the Fire Chief designation from the Center for Public Safety, and recently Deputy Chief Ray Lamaro, Training Officer, pursued that same, he did one for the Fire Officer designation. So, it's a huge thing. You have to put in all your time. You have to fill out a large application, way bigger than the one I had to do. And then it's something you have to maintain for the next three years as well. So, this is, Ray, come on up. So, Commission on Professional Credentialing. So, he was designated as a Fire Officer, and he gets to wear something on his uniform for that designation for demonstrating a high level of competence as witnessed by his peers and by documenting professional educational, technical, and community service achievements and fulfilling prescribed standards, performance, ethics, and conduct as required by the Fire Officer Program. So, I want to congratulate Ray for doing this. And again, he's one of, I think it says 300, one of 400 people in the world that has gotten this achievement. So, it's a lot of work to put into it, a lot of people just don't apply for it, so...
And your number's about the same too for Chief Officer?
Yeah, mine was a little lower, but yeah, it's right in that area. So, and Ray recently completed his two-year bachelor's as well, so he's pursuing his four-year as well, so working his way up. So, I applaud Ray for doing that. So, Ray, congratulations.
Since we're at it, stay up there because we haven't done this at City Council yet because we didn't put the news release out. But both Chief Heston and Deputy Chief Training Officer Ray Lamaro received the two top awards from the Washington State Fire Chiefs Association at its annual convention in Kennewick. Chief Heston was the Fire Chief of the Year Award, and Lamaro received the State Fire Chiefs Presidential Award for being the Training Advisory Group for the state, developing emergency vehicle incident prevention program for the state, and he's also coordinator of the program as well as instructor who travels around the state to help other departments. So, again, we have two top, we always knew you were top in the state, but I mean, I just want to make sure everybody knows, you're Fire Chief of the Year, and Ray is Professional of the Year. So, thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Well, awards just don't stop there. And this probably is a great introduction for Joanna Bailey, who's our librarian here, because the Washington City County Management Association included its inaugural year of the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, with women holding approximately one of five top executive roles. It's a priority of WCMA to prepare and promote more women into leadership roles in local government. The academy takes place over a 10-month period, includes six full days, one full day held every month, and they cover leadership and ethics, governance structure, communication strategies, strategic planning, finance and budgeting, labor relations, negotiations, life-work balance and all that. The first cohort, the class of 2019, included 32 women, and Joanna Bailey was one of the 32. We have a picture of her right there. We can point out the exact position of the 32. So, Joanna, we really want to congratulate you for doing that extra work, becoming part of that, improving your skills. And with that, that's the introduction for tonight's Neo-Public Library Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I greatly appreciate that, and thanks to Adam for letting me know about this and encouraging me to apply. Speaking of the leadership experience, it was really fantastic. I went into it not knowing what to expect, other than thinking it was going to be a room filled with women who were aspiring to be city managers. And actually, that was not the case. And we had, what made it such a unique cohort is that we had women from all different levels of government. We had people, we had an employee there who was from the animal control, we had somebody there from water sewer treatment plant, we had somebody there from police, and so all departments across the city and all levels in between. And that made it for really rich conversation as we kind of dug into topics. So, fantastic experience, as is leading the library. So, if we think back to 2018, scarcely six, what, six months ago, I'm here tonight to present the library's annual report for 2018, and I have, so for the last couple, last two years, I've presented our report in two formats, an infographic and a very detailed multi-page text document. And the reason for doing that is very intentional. We are trying to bring information about the library to the surface and present it in a way that's very consumable to all, to anybody who'd want to know about the library. So, in this format, it captures, we kind of drill down to the essence of service, we put it in very digestible formats and pictures and colors, and you can really, at a glance, get a sense of what happened in the library last year. For those interested, we have an equally informative six-page document that has a lot of text, and that presents anybody who wants to know about the library with really two different ways to learn. We have gotten, since when I did this last year for the first time, I actually had people in the library, patrons, coming to me and saying, "Oh, my gosh, I learned about the library. This was really great." So, getting that positive feedback is the reason you're seeing here again tonight. So, I hope this is a good format for you as well. And again, you have the drill-down detail too. So, last year, we had 15,683 library accounts that were made. That is an increase of almost 5% over last year. Okay. When we, when we look at how many, so what does 15,683 library cards look like? Well...
I'm going down.
Oh, okay.
Because it's not quite four. Ratio's a little different.
Okay. Thank you. So, when you look at that many accounts, if you set that within the framework of total library cardholders that we have, we learn that 80% of our cardholders are Pullman residents, and that's a fantastic number. Sure, we'd like that to be 100%, but we're really, really happy with 80%. When we change the framework and we look at the number of Pullman resident cardholders within the framework of Pullman's total population, the view shifts a little bit. And now we've got, we can see that 37% of Pullman's residents own a library card. So, that tells us that there's work to be done there. So, we are spending 2019 and 2020 working on increasing the number of Pullman resident cardholders. When we rolled out Lynda.com, which is an online, is an online learning, self-driven, self-guided learning platform, over 12,000 courses, we, you need a library card to access that, the curriculum. We saw an increase in the number of library cards we were getting. When we, when we launched Virtual Reality, you don't need a library card. However, people came in because they came in to do the VR, they also stayed to get a library card. So, bringing in unique opportunities helps us drive those numbers up. When we look at service in action, we can see that we had 5% more visits last, in 2018. That number, 293,000, equates to about a little over 5,000 visits a week. We have a comprehensive collection, and by that I mean physical titles on the shelf and downloadable titles. We have a physical, I mean, excuse me, a comprehensive collection of almost 120,000 titles. And then of that, almost 42,000 of them are downloadables. Now, downloadables are a really, it's a great format, and we are finding, the more we, the more we work with downloadables and the more we talk with people, we are finding that that really can be the gateway to reading for folks. What is wonderful about this, everybody's on their device anyway, you know, whether it's a phone, or a tablet, or a computer, and people travel. Well, what's nice about this, from what we hear from patrons, is they are already there, so they already have the device with them. It's with them wherever they go. So, loading on a book or an ebook is a really nice way to bring reading to them in a more convenient way, and there are no library fines. So, with downloadables, you borrow, you read, you return, and in some, in most cases, you can just, it just returns automatically. So, literally, it is the pure enjoyment of reading with no downside. The downloadable collections are by count, set within the comprehensive collection, that equates to about 35% of our total collection. When we look at how are these items, how are our materials used, that comes to circulation. Our circulation last year was steady at 372,271 transactions. This little chart here shows you what does that look like when you look at our physical titles versus our downloadable titles? What is the circulation or the use of those two collections? You can see that the downloadable titles in that darker color here is about 16% of our total circulation. So, as popular as downloadable material is, as popular as that format is, the physical, the use of physical title still eclipses downloadable use. When we debuted the downloadable collection in 2014, we started seeing year-to-year a 2% growth every year. So, we went from 11% of our total circulation to now, for 2019, we're at 18%. We ended 2018 at 16%, so we're already 2% over in 2019. We ended 2018 with 24 employees, and we had 22% more public computing sessions. Now, this is an important figure because it demonstrates one of the reasons why people come into the library. We have Wi-Fi, people bring their devices into the library, but there's a large number of people who don't have access to the Internet and/or they come to the library to use the computers there. I actually, I asked a couple of patrons, I said, "You know, I know you have computer resources at home. Why the library?" And they said, "Oh, it's because we can be, when we're at the library, we can be a part of the community. We hear people around us, we hear activity around us, we can, we feel like we're a part of the community, and so we, even though we could do this at home, we like doing it here. We like chatting with staff, we like meeting people." So, it's more than a computer on a desk. It's coming to the libraries and experience. So, 22% more public computing sessions. We have 11 terminals, to give you an idea. So, if you divide 11 terminals, 12,900 sessions by 11 terminals, you get 1,173 sessions per terminal in the year. So, our terminals are used well. So, whoops, next up is the, excuse me, our programs, Learning by and for the Community. In 2018, we had 492 programs. We had close to 13,000 participants. Our volunteer, our volunteer investment rose by 8%. We had 8% more hours in service. You can see the breakdown there, 2,276 total service hours, and you can see the breakdown in how those hours are allocated. 14% more reference conversations. Those are what happen, we have a circulation desk, we have a reference desk. When people have questions that go beyond, "Do you have a certain title?", we go to the reference desk, and that's where the conversations can go from a three-minute conversation to a 30-minute conversation. Depends on, it's all user-driven, so it depends on what the questions are. So, 14,476 questions in a year equates to about 300 a week. So, we're busy. Using Innovation to Exceed Expectations. So, you will see a video of this if you didn't get a chance to look at it online. This is speaking to both our User Experience Project and our Lean Project that we did last year. So, I know I've come before you to talk to you about our User Experience Project. Both UX and Lean offer two very similar approaches to improving service. One, the UX, the User Experience approach focuses on the very public-facing services. So, how do users, how do your customers interact with the services that you provide, and what does that experience look like for them? So, it's very outward-facing. Lean, the Lean approach, it is also a continuous improvement process, but that really turns inward, and it focuses on a process, and then staff actually break that process down into minute pieces, and then we look at where the redundancies are. And by looking at where the redundancies are, you then can pull out and you kind of narrow it, narrow it, narrow it, until you get down to what is the essence of the process. And then from that, you create time. And when you create time, you then have time to do great things. So, it is really, it's a process of digging down really deep, understanding the process, and then figuring out how can you get it down to its absolute most efficient method of operating. So, last year, as a result of these two different projects, these are the improvements that we, that we rolled out. We provide, provided easier, more intuitive online and on-shelf browsing. Online, we added what's called a discovery layer to our online catalog. So, literally, it is, if you think about the online catalog as a box within which you do searches, the discovery layer lays over that box, and that's the layer that the user interacts with. And it provides a, a much more user-intuitive process. It provides more, it interacts with the database that we use to find items, and you get more accurate results. So, as a result of that online discovery layer and with the on-shelf browsing, we started allowing patrons to not just place requests on the items that weren't on the shelf, but we allowed them to place requests that were on the shelf. So, if you wanted the latest John Grisham and it's sitting there on the shelf, you put, you go to the online catalog, you place the request, it says it's on the shelf, the library staff get that list in the morning, and as part of our opening duties, we go and pull that book for you. And then you get an email saying, "Hey, it's here." So, then you can come down and pick it up. So, the item doesn't have to be checked out for you to say, "I want it." And so, as a result of those two improvements, our first-time checkouts rose from 9% to 14%. We saw a 12% increase in the number of requests that were placed on items. And then when staff went to go fill those, fill those requests or get those items for patrons, we had a 95% fill rate. 4% of that was from cancellations that were, user cancellations. So, they placed a request, and then they realized, "Oh, I don't really actually want that," and they canceled the request. So, that's our 95% fill rate. New items, new items became available as a result of the Lean Project, and we'll get into that, this is where the video comes in. New items became available a minimum of 36% sooner. We also eliminated the wait time. So, it used to be prior to these two projects that you would have to go to the circulation desk, wait in line to get your book, because the book was, your hold, your book, was behind the circulation desk. So, it required staff engagement to get your item. So, if the lines were five deep, you had to wait five people just to come and get your item. We listened to patron feedback, and they said, "You know what? We just want to be able to come in, grab our item, and go." So, how did we make that happen? Well, we created a self-hold station. So, now when you place a hold on an item, you can choose. Would you like that item to be held for you behind the circulation desk? Or would you like that item to go to the shelf, be filed under your last name? You can come in, pick it up, turn right around, do the self-check-it-out yourself on our self-checkout machine, and away you go. People love it. We spent a really long time rolling that part, that piece out because we had to really think about patron privacy. How do we make these items accessible to the public, but also protect patron privacy by name and also by what you're borrowing? That thought process paid off when we went to roll it out. People loved it, we had no complaints. And we still, like I said, we still offer the behind the desk holds because we recognize that not everybody is comfortable with their hold being right out there. We also have patrons that really enjoy talking with staff, and we love that. We're always here to talk to staff. And we also want to honor people who really just want to get in, grab, and go. So, this affords that. And then we have a ukulele circulating collection. It's fabulous. That is thanks to the ukulele players of the Palouse, or U-Pop. They came in 2018, and they did a workshop, they had a performance, and then it was hands-on playtime. And we had kids there all the way from three years old to 18 years old, and we had adults as well. And it was hands-on time to play with the ukuleles, and then you could put holds, we could, it was a first-come, first-served. The line formed immediately, and the first three picked them up and left the library with them. Since that time, there has been no time when there hasn't been seven holds on each ukulele. So, it's very popular. And amazingly, people are willing to wait three weeks in between. So, one, one patron said, "This is like Christmas. I forgot I put a hold on this, and now it's here. This is such, this is so great." Okay. So, let me break from this. I'll show you the Lean video, and then we'll come back and wrap it up. Our library, right now, has a staff of 23 employees. We are open Monday through Saturday, 52 hours a week. The programs that we have here are, again, with the public and the community in mind, they are not, while they are educational, they are not academic curriculum-based. Librarians really value full information, and so to that end, we spent a lot of time looking at what Lean is. We had some good conversations about what is it like when we talk about creating a performance culture, really laying kind of the bedrock for, for a Lean project and to kind of give, if we're going to put in this much time and effort on something, we really want to kind of leverage its success. So, if we get all staff involved and informed, and everybody's got the buy-in from the beginning before we even say we're going to do a project, then that project is going to have a better chance of being successful.
And I think that's what you're seeing in a public library. You're seeing that teams of people are coming together and conversing about a longer process that wouldn't necessarily be a part of the everyday conversation, but because we're giving them the time to have those conversations and to discuss what each step is, they're able to come up with a solution to eliminate the waste that isn't necessary to accomplish the job effectively.
A little bit of background, I've been here nearly three years, and part of our goal has been to get things through processing a little bit faster. There have been times where it's taken up to two or three months for an item to come into the library before it makes it to the shelf, and we don't really like that so much. We want it to get out quicker. So, part of the idea behind this was, what are some things we can do to speed that along, to get things through faster?
And so, what we were trying to do is evaluate the time that it takes for the process for someone to ask for a book up until the time they get it in their hands. When Deborah came from the center to help us, she taught us about the Lean methodology. She walked us through the process. As you can see behind me, we did the whole color, post-it note, break-it-down practice, you know, to handle this huge multi-step process.
We went and took all of our steps to have like the ordering section, and then when the books come in, and what you have to do with the book to get it ready, because even when it comes in, you have to put stickers and things on it, and then how it gets out, like how people find out about it, even when it comes in, like why is it coming in? Did we order it of our own accord, or did someone ask for it? So, all of those things were factored in and mapped out.
I think one of the big takeaways I got from this is, we did not fully understand the process, nor did we fully understand everybody's part in the process. Because it doesn't just affect my department, it affects other departments as well, and everyone has a part to play in it.
Before, you know, I guess our goal was to move things faster and to learn things, and before you're just doing things, and then you move them on. But having us go through this 40-hour thing and map everything out and talk to the whole library, now people are constantly thinking about it, constantly thinking about what they can improve, constantly remembering that it is our goal to be faster.
It was a really intense week. It was, it was a lot of work. Most of us were really tired every night when we got home, but it was so very fruitful. So, it just, it's so helpful.
We actually decided to try, instead of two weeks, let's kick it down and let's try to get everything processed in a week. And we didn't make it, and that's okay, because the fact that we, that we, you know, that we're able to celebrate successes and keep trying, we'll keep tweaking, and maybe, you know, maybe we'll be able to get it down to a week. But in any case, we're still way under where we wanted to be, which was the two-week mark.
We're all very appreciative that we have the auditor's office to provide this service, and it's not something that a lot of states do, and it's not a lot, it's not often that you see auditor's offices, I think, embracing something like this. So, we're certainly thankful that it's something that's offered.
Okay. So, I think the video said it all. The only thing I would add is that one of the things that I appreciated most about the Lean process was that it took our normal approach of top discussions delivered, disseminated down, and it flipped it on its head. And we pulled first, management was not even in the room for those 40 hours, when, when the team was working through that process. So, we pulled all of our frontline staff, the people that actually work with the process, and we said, "You're in charge. You study this, you understand it, and then you give us your recommendations for how to make things better." And when I was saying in the video earlier that doing the groundwork before you do something like this with the staff is critical, because I had to make sure that, that we as a management team were on the same page, so that we weren't asking this group to go in, do all this hard work, and then come to us with recommendations for us to say, "Eh, I don't think so." We, as a management group, had to be on the same page and say, and agree that we were going to keep our eyes open, our ears open, and we were going to try what they bring to us. That's the only way this is going to be of value. And then we also had to get on the same page with our, with our group that did, when our frontline group, we had to get on the same page that it's okay to bring ideas to the management group. You know, it's okay that you're in the driver's seat, because this was, I had sort of assumed that just saying to them, "Hey, I support you to be in the driver's seat, and it's going to be good." I thought that that was going to be enough encouragement that they would take it and run. And what caught me off-guard with this was... And what caught me off-guard with this was, it's, they need more. They need not just the words saying, "Hey, I support you," but they also need some coaching. They need somebody to say, "I get it, I know why you're feeling hesitant, this is not a normal role that you have, but it's good and it's okay." So they needed that. Both groups needed different things. And because we were able to come together and do all of that groundwork, this project was a huge success. Wrapping up, that's just information about the budget. Thanks very much, as always, to our Friends of Neil Public Library. Last year, they provided almost $55,000 in funding, this is amazing. Because of the Friends of the Library, we are able to be the library that people value and appreciate. There are just, there is, there's two things on the library detail page report that I want to just highlight very quickly. The first is that when we look at our personnel, what happened with our personnel last year, we had six resignations and four hires. This is really significant, because it is the first time, so the library's rate of turnover dropped 3.3% points in 2015. The, excuse me, in 2018. In 2015, the library's overall turnover rate was 52%. Okay, that was a tough year. In 2018, our turnover was 19%. So because of, because of the changes that we've made, because of your support, your financial support, we, our staff has had more time to focus on service deliverables and innovative improvements, because we haven't been caught in that cycle of training. So I want to thank you for that. The last thing to mention is that in November, we partnered with the Pullman Police Department with Sergeant Opkenorth and his team to do an active shooter training. And that was a really important experience for staff to have, so I want to thank the police, thank Sergeant Opkenorth and his team for that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Less questions, more statement. I got to say, like many of the departments here at Pullman, the adoption of innovation is, has, seems to be a part of our DNA, but in, at the library especially, it's very apparent, very, right in front of the community, the adoption of the, you know, computers way back when. Virtual reality, you know, was a hit. At Art Fest, you had lines, people just wanting to get into the library to try this out. So I know it comes from great leadership of our department heads, especially yourself, Joanna, and a great, just an amazing staff. And I will say, I'm one of those time waiters who goes in and talks to the staff far too, far too much. And you guys have an awesome DVD collection, I'm always in there for that. So.
Thank you, thank you. We've got a great team.
Yeah, I just want to give you kudos, I think you know that I, I think the world of what you're doing right now, I especially, like, I appreciate the humility to say there are ways we can get better, and that does not go unnoticed. I have one request, could you tell us about Art Walk, your perception of how it went this year, and, I don't know, anything that you plan on for next year?
Sure, sure. Art Fest.
Art Fest.
Was a great experience, it got rebranded to Art Fest.
Rebranded, yeah.
Yep. And in the same breath, let me say thank you to Councilmember, I just know you as Brandon, Chapman, Councilmember Chapman.
Chapman.
Councilmember Weller, and Councilmember Wright for volunteering at Art Fest. It was great. We're working on a report to bring, for the commission to present to you. The weather was not our friend leading up to, leading up to the Saturday street fair, but nevertheless, we had a really good turnout. We had a whole lot of new participation, and we always love to see that. We had new artists, we had new businesses, we had new nonprofits, so it was fantastic. And the, for the library, we had, so on Saturday specifically, we had 2,000 more people in the library because of Art Fest, because of the artists that we had with our art on the walls, because of the kids' art studio that was going on, and because of virtual reality. So, it was great.
And if anyone has not checked out the new art installation out in front of the library, it is fantastic. It is an amazing tribute to the, here.
... installment. The Pullman Arts Commission will be at the July meeting considering whether to recommend that to council, to you all, for a permanent installment, so for right now, it's temporary.
And it was, the money was provided by Book Club here in town.
That's correct, it was Grand Avenue, Greenway, and Ingleside Book Club.
Pat, you had a comment?
Joanna, thank you, as always, a great presentation. And just a comment on, I understand how difficult it is to introduce a cultural change, such as what you're doing. And that you, you know, the temptation is, okay, it's rolled out and we're done, but it takes ongoing presence, and as you said, coaching, and so that, you know, is an ongoing process, and, you know, I applaud you for your innovation and the energy that it takes to make that happen. I do have one question, more technical however. On the downloadables, how actually does that work? Is it unlimited number of copies that people can download? Is there licensing issues? What exactly is involved with that?
There are licensing issues, and it is not an unlimited download. So you would browse the downloadable collection like you do a physical collection, you just do it on your device or on the computer, it works from either. And then when you select the title that you'd like to read or listen to, you literally, you actually download it, using your library card, you download it to your device. And then once that, you can set your borrowing period, whether you want two weeks or three weeks, when the borrowing period has expired, then that title disappears, and then it gets returned, virtually returned.
Great.
Thank you.
And just wanted to do a plug for the new, if anybody wants to get a new library, you know, card, or, I don't have my card.
Yeah, the new logo, right?
Yeah, the new branded logo, so definitely go and see yourself, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, Topaxx, also.
Joanna, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And again, thank you for participating with the first cohort. Congratulations on that. We're now at item D, this is the consent agenda. These items are considered a routine nature. Do I hear a motion read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with that? Mayor McAuliffe, there's the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 4, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 96093 through 96133, totaling $1,526,975.45. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 533 through 537, totaling $604,251.96. Accounts payable checks numbered 96134 through 96156, totaling $413,351.2. Payroll checks numbered 74642 through 74734, totaling $97,892.91. And electronic payroll transfers, numbers 5353 through 55622, totaling $870,774.77. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 96157 through 96263, totaling $1,203,666.18. A motion to approve dispersments represented by electronic transfer, 5252019, totaling A motion to approve a lodging tax grant to City of Pullman on behalf of the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport in the amount of up to $150,000 for a community match to the Small Community Air Service Development Grant. Resolution number R-41-19. A resolution setting a date for a public hearing to consider Pullman Transit bus route adjustments to take effect in August 2019. Resolution number R-42-19. A resolution accepting waterline easements from SEL Development LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company. And resolution number R-43-19. A resolution accepting a public access and utility easement from SEL Development LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company.
No, Pat, you said you wanted a full item number six tonight. Is there any other item that anybody would like to have out? Then the consent agenda consists of items 1 through 5, and 7 through 9. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with that? Item number six, Pat.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. So I just wanted to comment that we have a very rare and unique opportunity here in being asked to consider this $150,000 grant to the airport, which is actually a match to a grant that's being proposed by the US Department of Transportation. And what essentially this is going to be for is to market more airline business to the region. And what that may end up doing for us is having air travel going directly from Pullman to Denver. I think maybe two flights a day to start with, and then as it goes out at Denver, you've got that many more opportunities. And this is just going to have an amazing impact on the economy of the region, just on so many different levels. And so I wanted to just make sure everybody knew exactly how momentous this is, as well as thanking Tony, who's not here tonight, he's in Boston. He does an amazing job of pulling all this information together. I don't know how his head holds it all, it's pretty crazy.
He's a Marine, he can handle it.
And I would also like to thank the members of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, because we did, we did do a great job in reviewing this and approving it to come to the council for most.
And you hit top scores throughout the whole.
And gained a score of 100 out of 100 points on the grant itself, so.
Any comments on that?
I got a question. So, the grant is $300,000.
Correct.
And we're going to do 150, and then it gets matched from the government for 150.
Correct.
So. There's a lot of community participation, too. The first donation actually came from EMSI over in Moscow towards this whole project. So we're trying to raise, trying to raise at least $300,000. And that becomes sort of a guarantee for air service. Mike Urban is our finance director and attended that meeting.
Yeah, so the other part to that, too, is this is the local match to a much larger grant, almost $1 million, to help secure United coming in possibly and being that second service to stabilize their revenues on bringing in a new set of, new set of routes into Denver. And this, it's two other steps on that, you know, it's not going from that west-to-go-east thing, but United has gone so far, is they're going to put a letter of support for the federal grant in with this, and that's not a common practice for United. And they also contacted the Chamber of Commerce and offered them at no charge, a half-page ad in their in-flight magazine to help start building some support for a Pullman run.
So it's not directly United-Sky West on behalf of United, that's what they usually offer.
I was just, that explains it, because a match, it's more than that. And then, just a comment, they're asking Moscow for only $50,000, though. $150,000 here.
I can address that. It's a little different in Idaho as far as their chambers and where the money goes, how it has to go down to Boise, and get approved by the state, as opposed to how things are done in Washington. So it's going across the lines, and how the laws and everything else is divvied out. So it's, it's availability as well as the other.
Well, and if I could expand on that, too. I chatted with Jenny Ford the other day, who is the executive director of the Moscow Chamber, and there is still some negotiating going on as to the final amount that they're going to be able to get from, I think it's the Department of Commerce that administers that for Idaho. So it's, the lodging tax monies are administered a little differently in that state than here, but it's going forward on a very positive note for Idaho support as well.
And I probably should have put a bow on the whole thing, too. This is also, this is the grant that came in front of council earlier, when Tony asked for the City of Pullman to become the proponent, because that's the better chance of the feds getting that. So this is, you know, the first part of that local match, so it's coming full circle now.
I'm all for it, I just want all of our partners to participate equally.
I remember when Tony brought this forward, so I, Pat, I appreciate you bringing this up, because if you didn't call it out a consent agenda, I would have, just because I want it, because of the amount to, for everybody in the open to remember that this was what we had agreed to, at least being that lead in this, and so that, so it wasn't just, you know, $150,000 that nobody remembered what it was for. I mean, this is really important for us to do, and now we can talk about it one more time with residents, so they know that we're doing our part on this. So thank you for asking for that to come out.
You're welcome.
There's one who serves on the airport board, it's absolutely amazing how many people I've heard from who said, "We can hardly wait till we get something that goes east." And I talked to one who's a 2-million-mile worth of United Airlines, and he flies to South America all the time, and he says, "Right now, I have to go, you know, basically, I'll either go to Spokane, or I'll go up to Seattle, and then go for my route." And he said, "This would be so helpful for us." And they're talking about a proposal that Meaden Hunt, who is our consultant, put together who does air service, it's basically an Embraer 50-seat passenger jet that would be used for this. And there's two flights a day, one roughly, I'm not going to say this, this is proposed, at 6:00 AM, another one around 11:30 or noon. And then they have another flight that comes, two flights that come in from Denver on that, so.
And then the late one, I think, stays over, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I don't know that all yet, because Sky West keeps airplanes moving as much as they possibly can, so. But anyway, it's a fantastic proposal, fantastic opportunity, and it's true economic development for this area, so.
The other part on that economic, too, I'm sorry to add to this, and I should have mentioned it earlier, is the retention for our eastbound passengers going to Seattle and then east, is only 20%, where, you know, where they are going to Spokane or Lewiston instead. So having Denver to go eastbound just gives us more PFCs coming in through Pullman, which means more revenue, and that can be an even bigger revenue generator.
So with that, do you want to make a motion?
Move to approve lodging tax grant to City of Pullman on behalf of the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport in the amount of up to $150,000 for a community match to the Small Community Air Service Development Grant.
Second. Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Pat, Pat and Mike Urban as well. We now move to our regular agenda, these items are now up before us, because we're going to, first of all, talk about an item that was on discussion the last time around, and that was the Critical Access Areas, and Pete Dickinson, our city partner.
Thank you, Mayor, council. You have before you an ordinance that amends the city's critical areas regulations, and you'll recall at the public hearing two weeks ago, staff suggested some minor editorial changes to the ordinance based on public input received, and council, you authorized us to make those changes. At that time, staff also suggested potentially adding a reference to the Palouse Prairie ecosystem in the section on habitats of local importance, again, based on public input. And I appreciate, Mayor, that you asked us to check with state agencies about that, which we did. And those agencies expressed concern about singling out the Palouse Prairie habitat without formally addressing the means to locate and protect those areas. As a result, staff has not included reference to Palouse Prairie habitat in the ordinance. Like I said two weeks ago, as part of the general administration of this ordinance, we do protect that particular habitat where it's identified in the field. From staff's perspective, everything now appears to be in order with respect to this matter, so the action requested of you, council, is to act on the proposed ordinance. And I'll take any questions.
Questions, if you have. Eileen?
Just sort of a side note, is there any, you know, activity to identify further areas that would fall into that designation with the Palouse Prairie Habitat? Are we identifying any more areas, or?
Actually, in my conversations with members of the Palouse Prairie Foundation, they mentioned that Whitman County has a map, a remnants map of Palouse Prairie Habitat, and so we are going to acquire that map and incorporate that into our own local maps.
Excellent, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Then do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance number 19-6.
Second. Laura, would you read that, please?
Ordinance number 19-6, an ordinance of the C Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to Title 16, Environment, Chapter 16.50, Critical Areas, Amending Pullman City Code and Other Matters Pertaining There Too.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is a resolution authorizing execution of a professional services agreement between the city and CWA consultants. With that, Kevin Gardiser, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Starting in 2015, staff solicited proposals from qualified consultants to perform as-needed plan review services to augment our protective inspection. to perform as-needed plan review services to augment our Protective Inspection Division of Public Works. The primary reason was due to increased workload as a result of the city resuming building permit responsibility on the Washington State University campus. The initial agreement was for a four-year period, which is up on June 30th of this year. With the end of the agreement coming up, staff again RFP'd for consulting services. Six proposals were received, and CWA Consultants was selected. They are the incumbent firm that was also selected in 2015. A professional services agreement has been negotiated with CWA, has an estimated budget of $60,000 per year, or $240,000 over the four-year period of the agreement. The actual amount could be greater or less, it just depends on the level of construction activity and the number of plans that are sent out for review. Typically, they're the more complicated projects, the bigger, if it's got a lot of structural issues, we send those out. Each individual project review will be completed on a task order basis. Funding will be from the Protective Inspections Budget of the General Fund, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Kevin? If not, do I see a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second, Laura.
Resolution number R-44-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and CWA Consultants, PS, for professional plan review services.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three in the regular agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing execution of a ground lease between the city of Pullman and Revenge of the Red Eye LLC. With that, Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. In June of last year, a conditional use permit application was filed for construction of an outdoor seating area at Valhalla Barn Grill, located at 1,000 Northeast Colorado Street. This seating area would, the seating area would be established on a slightly raised terrace, up to approximately eight-inch curb, proposed for construction between the building and the remaining sidewalk along Colorado Street. A portion of the terrace is located in the public right-of-way. Public Works is supportive of the proposed project, as it would provide sidewalk improvements along Colorado Street, adjacent to the outdoor seating area, along with ADA ramp improvements at the northeast corner of Colorado and C Streets, thus improving pedestrian travel routes in the area. At their September 17, 2018, meeting, the Board of Adjustment approved a conditional use permit. A condition of the approval reiterated a Public Works comment that prior to construction of the outdoor seating area, a ground lease agreement be approved by city council. A ground lease agreement has been prepared, it is attached for consideration. Attachment A to that agreement is a sketch of the lease area falling within the right-of-way. The calculated annual fee is $120.14. This fee uses the rate of 50 cents per square foot, which was established in 2014, and that was a council direction to basically relook at our ground lease rates. And we've since bumped that up, based on the Consumer Price Index, to a current rate of $0.558 per square foot. The 2014 lease initiated the new methodology for the annual fee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you kind of describe what the sidewalk improvements are going to be? You mentioned the ramp, but is that removing the current sidewalk, replacing it with brand-new, and addressing those?
Yes. Yeah, if just the terrace would have gone in, we still would have had a fairly steep sideslope sidewalk. So the applicant has agreed to replace all of the sidewalk, all the way to Colorado Street, and redo the grade, so it's no, the cross slope is no more than 2%, which meets ADA requirements.
Any other questions? Jeff Packer's here tonight, too, if you have any additional questions. There are no more questions, then do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-45-19.
Right.
Wait, a lot of seconds on that one.
Resolution number R-45-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a ground lease between the city of Pullman and Revenge of the Red Eye LLC.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we move to discussion items. Tonight, we have to discuss a proposed agreement between the city and Washdott. With that, Kevin? And Art, and anybody else who would like to make a comment. And great attire, Art, as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. I've come before you this evening to solicit your input on a contract, or an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation we've been working on that provides reimbursement funding for the potholes that we fill on Highway 270 and 27. And so in your packet, I had provided a couple of things. There was a draft resolution, there was a memo that I provided, sent to you through Kevin, and then there was the actual contract itself. And so, just to give you some brief background on, you know, my perspective of this, Mike, since I've been here, I've been perfect city for 19 years. And as long as I can remember, we've been filling potholes on Main Street without, you know, it's just a normal, everyday kind of thing. And this came up when we started to look at the maintenance agreement that the state has. And it provides, it makes the state responsible for the surface areas of the roadway. And so then the questions started to become, you know, if that's the case, then shouldn't we be reimbursed for this? And so we looked at that, and, you know, I started talking to the state about that. And we all concluded that, yes, it was the responsibility of the state. And so that's kind of brought us to where we are tonight. Now, to give you some ideas, I think there's some numbers in there, you know, in 2016, 2017, you know, we didn't really have any good data that I could pull from prior to that, so I don't have any really good data about how much it cost us before that. And so in 2016, 2017, the average was roughly, you know, $7,000 and some change that we, that the city expended to fill those potholes. This contract before, that is proposed right now, is, it provides, you know, $6,000 in the first year escalated up by 3% per year for a five-year period. And so with the provisions that if we exceed that, we can do one of two things. And the first thing we can do is we can, I can write a letter to the state saying, "Hey, we're going to exceed that, we need to increase the budget," or they can take over the work. So with that, I guess I'd like to get your input on your, any questions you might have, or?
Well, I know we've had some significant potholes on 27. I mean, you know, right by the chamber, we've had some places that we've had actually damaged and things like that. So the sooner we can get reimbursement from the state is fantastic. And thank you for working through this a little bit, too. So, if we turn it over to them, when do the potholes get repaired?
And that's the step, that's the concern of the staff, is we, you know, we've done this, is, you know, I think there's two reasons. We want to, we want to be able to quickly reply to citizen complaints, you know, and I've worked with you on a couple of those. You know, we want to get out there and get them filled. We don't want to have to wait or go through a phone tree to try to figure out who's going to come and fill them and have that time in between. The other thing, we want to have the safest roads in the state, you know. We get awards for other things, why not the safest roads in the state? And so I think that's a big part of it, is getting those quick, filled quickly, reducing our risk as far as the liability of maybe having, you know, damaged vehicles, or, you know, even the staff kind of thinks, you know, we might not pay that, it takes staff time to kind of go through that process, so.
So, they're responsible for what, the state, the surface?
Yes.
So if a pothole occurs, are they, do they have liability for the damage that occurs? Laura?
Well, it's their roadway?
Yes.
So same as if the city had roadway? The liability only arises for a local government after they've been put on notice of the hazard. So, you know, any vehicles that drive through before it's reported to the government don't have a claim unless, unless there's evidence that we had prior notice or that the government, the state had prior notice. But it doesn't change the fact that it's still their highway, their roadway, and they are the owner of that and responsible for the maintenance of it. We are, under this agreement, we would simply be acting as, instead of them having to call a contractor or send their crew out, for the benefit of Pullman citizens, we will go ahead, under this agreement, go ahead and act as soon as we're notified. And they'll get notified, too, as well, obviously, because they're the primary property owner. And we'll then go out and repair it and bill the state for the cost of the repair.
So where I'm going with this is past claims that have been turned in have been turned into the city.
Sure, because people, because people don't understand that it's a state highway necessarily.
So will we educate our citizens on making a claim with the state versus making a claim with the city?
I would defer to Art, but I would think that the process would still be, if we get a complaint, we're going to notify the owner of the claimed-about property. So that's, in this case, that's going to be the state. And then, under this special contract, we'll go out and do the repair and bill them. But the notice will still go to the state. The citizen might contact the city, that's not unusual. We get complaints through all different avenues, and we route them where they're supposed to go. But in this case, we'll go out and repair it.
Okay.
Nathan?
Yeah, I think this is great, but my question, I do have a question regarding, you know, the repairs 2016, 2017, as you said, was 77. The first year that we're, this will be the first year, it's starting out at 6,000, with the fifth year coming out at 6,700, that's a, you know, that seems pretty, uh...
Modest.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Seems pretty, I'm sorry.
Modest, yeah.
It's pretty low for, you know, reimbursement. Is there wiggle room saying, "Hey, look, we're actually paying, you know, $1,000 plus more than this reimbursement"?
Yeah, so the process that I kind of foresee going through this, and I'm really waiting until we pass, you know, figure out, you know, what the contract's going to look like or the agreement's going to look like. But as Laura stated, you know, it'll be something where we notify the state, first of all. The wiggle room in that is, so when we go out to make a repair, city staff will create a work order for that, each repair that we do. And in that work order, we will track the time it takes, the vehicles we use, and the materials that we use. And then I will compile those together and make a reimbursement request for that cost. And so we will fully burden our labor, you know, we'll include benefits and overtime and all that. It won't just be an hourly rate that's not based on that. And so they'll, it'll really be a true cost of what we expend.
Okay.
And the wiggle room, I guess, is if, the provision is that if we go over that, if I project that we're going to go over that, I'm going to be really proactive about trying to get more, because I think we want, we really want to keep this in-house. And so, and I think they'll be, they'll be pretty easy to work with if that ever should be the case.
Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to address your question as well. We talked about that quite a bit, the value, that number. And it's really just a starting point here, I think, for us. If we get into this and it ends up being $7,000 or $8,000, we're going to notify them, and we'll adjust that budget. So it's really a learning process for us and the state. One thing that has happened is SR 270 was repaved in 2017, if memory serves correctly, so...
What, in July?
So I think part of those 2016, '17 numbers probably included quite a bit of pothole work on 270. The state, I read recently, they're pushing off their resurfacing, but they had originally scheduled to do more work on SR 27 within the next couple of years. So hopefully, our workload goes down as far as potholes. But really, from a staff point of view, it's a customer service thing that, the reason we're proposing this. Because, you know, for us, we can just turn it over to the state and say, "It's your issue." But if it takes them a week or two to respond in the winter, because they're plowing snow, that's not a good service for the citizens, and that's why we're bringing it forward.
Well, considering how long it took them to try and repair some of the railroad crossings, it was their responsibility, too.
I left another one this morning.
You know, you see that, you need to, you need to respond a lot quicker than what they can do, so. And do you know of other cities that have these kind of agreements with the state?
Spokane County.
Oh, they do.
That's good.
The other thing I wanted to point out, because your concern, council member Weller seemed to stem from whether that $6,000 would be the limit. The paragraph following those limits clearly lays out that if we think that the pothole costs, the repair costs over the year are going to, may exceed, what we have is the reimbursement limit, we notify Washdott, and they have two options, either to increase the amount as we request, or to take over the repairs themselves for the amount in excess of that. So I think the contract protects the city from any overage.
I see, okay, yeah, thank you. Now, Eileen?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, and Art's documents make it clear that we do want to keep this in-house. We get a little jargonistic sometime, and I don't want the public to be confused. We do want our good city people taking care of our good city streets. We're not, we're not giving this off to the state as, well, maybe it's an option. The way you've got this laid out makes it quite clear that we want to keep this in-house, and we're going to take care of this here in Pullman, and then they're going to pay us. So we've got a little jargonistic there for a minute, yeah.
I'm curious, with the damage we have from the flood, we had effects up Highway 27 with some more rock and things of that nature, is that something that's bebillable to them?
I don't know that...
We spent some money getting rock in there and a lot of crew.
We can go back and look at that. Typically, it's curb-to-curb, though, a lot of times with their responsibility, so we'd have to go back and take a look at it, but that's a good question.
I think we were putting rock underneath their highway.
If that's the case, then we'll look into it.
Just trying to recover. Okay, any other questions on this? So basically, you're hearing from the council under this discussion. Go right ahead.
Okay, very good, so I'll...
And thank you for bringing this before, and thank you for persilient.
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
Next item for discussion is the downtown master plan kickoff. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight Brian Scott. He's a principal with BDS Planning and Urban Design. He's our selected consultant for our central business district master plan. We passed, council recently approved the professional services agreement for this. It's been a big topic of discussion for quite a long time. So it's exciting to kick this project off. Brian leads an impressive consultant team. This morning, we had a kickoff meeting with the steering committee that will help guide this work. So this is really day one. We wanted to come before council, highlight the project, introduce Brian, allow him to address council, and also get some initial feedback from council members on what your goals and desires are for this plan, so Brian can hear them from you. So without further ado.
I'm Mayor Johnson, members of the council. I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning and Urban Design. Thank you for sharing part of your meeting with me this evening. I'm the founding principal of this BDS Planning and Urban Design. I've been doing work in downtown revitalization in communities, the size and scale of Pullman for just almost 40 years, all in the Pacific Northwest. I founded this firm just about 10 years ago to pursue projects just like this one. We have projects all across Washington, Oregon, and increasingly in Idaho. Most recently, and maybe most relevant, we're just finishing a downtown master plan for Lewiston, Idaho. We finished one last year for Colville, Washington, as well as some updates to the downtown business improvement district in Spokane. So a lot of work in the neighborhood. Partnered with my firm on this is Framework, which is an architecture and planning firm that specializes in place-making and urban place, urban design kind of work, as well as parking. And then Welch Comer Engineers, who are out of Coeur d'Alene, and they specialize in transportation, infrastructure, civil engineering kind of issues. And then ED Hovey and Company, which is an economics firm based in Vancouver, Washington. All of us have worked together a number of times in different places. I've known some of these folks for many, many years. I think you really do have a team that is very well-suited to your needs, and we're excited to get going on it. You approved our contract at your last meeting, and here we are today with kickoff. We had 15 or 20 folks together all morning. We went on a tour of the downtown and talked about their hopes and expectations. The project has four phases. We're right now setting goals, basically, for the, right next week or two. And then we spend the next few months working on research and analysis, doing background into economic, social, political, environmental issues. And then we'll come together and start really doing the master planning at the end of the summer and into the fall, and then refining the plan and hoping to be at the Planning Commission and City Council for adoption early next year. The immediate next phases, which you're going to, I've already met several of you, and you're going to see some more of us, or at least talk to us on the phone. We're doing key stakeholder interviews with about 20 folks that are vested in the downtown, have different interests, and different members of the team will be talking to them. Part of my job is to talk to each of you, so we'll be reaching out to set up a phone call so we can talk about what some of your individual goals are pretty shortly. And then we're also going to be setting up some community engagement over the next few months, so anybody in... months, so anybody in town that wants to make a comment can do that, and so that we can kind of raise the profile of this effort going forward. A very high-profile piece of this process will be a master plan charrette, which will be a two-day, very interactive process, probably in late September, early October, and which will try and really flesh out the details of this master plan in a very public way with a couple of community meetings and work of this task force. So, that's where we are in the process. We're excited to get going. A lot of engagement. My initial take on this, the thing I know, the thing I know now that I didn't know at 8 o'clock this morning, is there are a lot of really interesting things happening in downtown Pullman that aren't immediately, you don't see them just driving through. There are a number of remarkable businesses that are new or reinvested in in the last few years, and a lot of really exciting things that many communities would kill for. They're a little under the radar, and they're a little far apart from each other, so you don't quite get the critical mass and the vibe that you do in some other towns. So, I think part of us is gonna be to really help Pullman recognize how good it is and fill in some of those missing pieces. And I think there are a number of other opportunities that we'll see going forward, and it's too soon to give you the answer, we just got started. So, that's where we are. And as Kevin said, I would be delighted to hear from you now, in this public place, about any particular hopes or expectations or goals for this process as we go into it.
Okay.
Sure.
Well, thank you. I'm really excited, actually, that you were selected. I trust inherently in the steering committee's decision. I'd be really interested to know your experience, or if you could talk about your experience dealing with other cities that had, of course, a state highway through downtown, and how you've been able to plan with those, I guess, with that factor involved, and how difficult, or maybe you find it easier than most people would expect, to be able to plan for even structural changes to a main street.
I have this fantasy going that someday, I'm gonna do a downtown revitalization plan when there isn't a state highway that's going through it. When I was with the Oregon Downtown Development Association and the Oregon Main Street Program, we actually published a book in partnership with the Oregon Department of Transportation called Main Street, When a Highway Runs Through It, because it was trying to help people understand that. So, I get it, that's a big deal, and you regularly end up with the competing challenges of people who are primarily tasked with getting vehicles through your downtown, from wherever they are, wherever they started to wherever they're going, and a whole cluster of things happening downtown and in your community that really want people to stay there. And those are kind of different goals for the same piece of concrete or asphalt. And so, trying to find that balance, so that the folks that are just trying to go through can do that efficiently and at a solid pace, at the same time, those people doing that doesn't just mess up the quality of being there. Sometimes, that means not everybody's using the same street for those differing purposes. Pretty often, it means that moving vehicles through the downtown at the maximum possible speed is not really a primary goal, and balancing that and getting everybody to recognize that if it might take another minute to get through the Central Business District, but the quality and the environment would be much better, that might be a good trade-off. And I'm positive that before we're through this, this topic will be further discussed and some of the trade-offs of how to do that. So, I think it's a real, it's a real interesting challenge. Like I said, we just finished the plan in Colville. There, they built a bypass 20 years ago to get the main trucks off of the main street. So, there are different solutions, experiences we've had, just go all the way around. One of my favorite anecdotes about this is when I was doing a workshop in Hepner, Oregon, which is on the Columbia River and kind of northeastern Oregon. And one of the things that the downtown businesses were complaining about is that the long-haul trucks that came across the Columbia River from Washington and were going toward Portland, it was three minutes faster to drive through the downtown than it was to take the interstate down to hook up with Interstate 84 and go over. And so, they would all do that, because it was a little faster. And while we were there, we said, you know, a couple of stop signs would turn that dynamic around about which was faster. And the work I was doing was being paid for by the Oregon Department of Transportation. And about three days later, I got a call from the northeastern Oregon Director of the Oregon Department of Transportation, and said, "We just got a proposal from the city manager in Hepner, and he wants to put five stop signs." And I said, "Uh-huh." And, but they really actually did, there was some negotiating, and those long-haul trucks really didn't need to go through that downtown. And so, figuring out a way that, if they want to, but they don't, it doesn't have to be the fastest way to get through there, because they'll pick that one. So, those trade-offs are there, so it's a challenge.
Counsel, yes. Anne?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Anne. I am wondering how we can incorporate accessibility and handicap parking and multimodal transportation in our downtown while still maintaining the charm that we all enjoy. That's a real issue for us right now, especially hand...
Accessibility, parking, and multimodal transportation.
Like bicycles and...
I think, actually, all of those things can help the charm. You know, I think recognizing that pedestrians and people with disabilities, them moving around in the downtown is just as important as the vehicles moving around, and balancing those needs, and recognizing that, you know, parking is like one of these things, that parking and downtowns are always intertwined, and the trick is to recognize, you know, why do people need to park to be there? Do they need to park all day long on the street, right in front of a store that they're working in, and trying to...
Does it need to be parallel versus diagonal?
Parallel versus diagonal. I'm positive we will be talking about that subject. So, I think balancing those needs, and really, it's about the pace of the traffic. You know, I'm not here to give you the answer today, we just started today, but we are very aware that multimodal transportation and accessibility are key issues, and every time we ever have the nerve to tell a town they don't have a parking problem, we get slapped. So, hopefully, I've learned that lesson. And just trying to find out that balance, and we hope we can do some sort of tracking of what's happening now, and recognizing that balancing those needs, that will be a key issue, so.
Yes.
I just wanna reiterate the accessibility. That is one of my main focuses in when we're looking at the downtown revitalization. What I consistently hear from folks in our community who have significant mobility impairments is that they avoid downtown at all costs. They're either going to businesses on the outskirts of town or to Moscow. And a lot of that is topographical, and a lot of that is just the nature and the age of the buildings downtown and the infrastructure that we have. But what I'm really interested in is kind of what your firm can offer, and kind of expertise in what you've seen and done with other cities on on-street disabled parking access, and finding some unique solutions for us there, given our state highway that runs through the middle. And I appreciate the reference to Hepner. I spent the first five years of my life in Hepner, and...
I saw you nodding your head.
It's rarely that I find somebody else that knows where that is.
Any other comments from the consul? Al?
So, I was, I'm on part of the steering committee, and very impressed with the presentation today and the group that we have going, and I know they were out doing their work, because I saw them walking around town, and even at late in the day, all types of things. So, I think we've got a good group going here, and I think this is gonna be really, really good.
Fair.
And I'm sorry, I didn't do my homework before asking this question, so it's gonna be a little bit nebulous, but it has to do with the cost of building out in existing storefronts, if you will, of which we have several downtown. And at a presentation that I went to one day last week, it was identified that the costs associated with doing those build-outs and tenant improvements are higher in Pullman than they are across the state line with our neighbor in Moscow. And so, do you look at those kinds of things when you're doing your evaluation in terms of, you know, how to revitalize and improve the Central Business District, looking at some of those cost factors?
Certainly, we will. One of the things, maybe, it's very clear to us that what people want is a master plan for a vibrant and lively downtown, and a vibrant and lively downtown is gonna need ongoing investment in people opening new stores and improving the stores that are there and other kind of uses. And so, we'll be interested in what are the barriers or any impediments to that. Cost is clearly one of them. We will interview some folks who have recently made such investments and/or have considered so, and based on what people on the committee tell us about who we should talk to, and ask them what their experience was. And what we find is, people often have something to say about, in your town compared to this other town, A, B, or C happened, which might be, you know, we got our permit faster in Pullman, or we got our permit slower in Pullman. You hear those kind of things. You know, probably, there isn't anything inherent. You know, your old buildings probably aren't a whole lot different than the old buildings in Moscow, but how you interpret building codes and what requirements are there and stuff may or may not be different. And I'll be interested to hear what people have to say that have invested in different places. And, you know, upholding the code is not necessarily a bad thing, so, but, you know, even though sometimes people say, when that guy from the city told me I had to do this and this, they don't like that. So, we have to find, we have to listen to some people and hear what those are. We'll definitely address it. My guess is, it isn't about the buildings themselves, you know, but there could be something about how regulations are, what regulations are there, and how they're administered in different communities.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of, you know, reiterate what Councilmember Sorensen said. I have a lot of confidence in this team. Their experience really comes through. And all the things that we've heard mentioned at so many of the community meetings over the last several years, you know, have been touched on this morning, and they see it, they know. And we're gonna hold their feet to the fire and make sure that that proves out. But, yeah, I've got a lot of confidence in it, that this time, you know, we've really got the right team, we've got the right people on the ground, we're doing the right homework, and we're gonna be moving forward on this.
Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, this is really exciting, and as a fellow planning nerd, Masters was in regional planning. So, I'm really very interested in, you know, the downtown is a microcosm of not only the cultural basis of Pullman, but I would say also the influences from Moscow, and looking at the strengths and weaknesses in relation to that, is my interest, looking a little bit more beyond. We're really focused on downtown, but some of those challenges, as Councilmember Wright has brought up, has also been impacted by, you know, our sister city or our city across the border. And so, looking beyond just, you know, right at downtown, but the regional impact that, you know, we've had, or that has impacted the downtown, that's my real interest. So, I know that's something that I think has really had a significant impact for us. So, I'm just putting that out there. It may be beyond the scope of this particular master plan, but...
Thank you for the observation, but, you know, the thing that, a great downtown is absolutely unique, and, you know, a great mall is probably not absolutely unique. It might be just like the next great mall, you know, ways down the road. But a great downtown is absolutely unique and is, as you say, a reflection of the place that it is, and it's a microcosm of all the things that are happening. And early in the process for me to be making too much of a statement about Pullman, but, you know, clearly, Pullman's history is being cheek-to-jowl with Moscow, and having a major university here and a major university there, and where you are in the regional transportation system and the agricultural interests that are around here. That's what Pullman is, and you ought to be able to tell that when you're in the downtown, and you ought to be able to feel that, and as you come in and out, you ought to know you went somewhere that was different than a town 100 miles down the road, for whatever set of reasons that is. And so, if we get it right, if you all get it right, you know, it will reflect that, and it'll feel like it's your downtown and not, you know, not a, somebody trumped up, somebody in the meeting today mentioned, you know, talked about it being like Disneyland. You know, you don't want it to be like Disneyland, because it's all, I mean, kind of the wonderful thing about Disneyland is it's all fake and you know it, you know, and, but that's not what you're gonna do here, because Disney does that better than you will. So, you know, so what you wanna do is make it real, and that's the key.
I would hope you'd also share with us some of the successes you've had before with dealing with absentee landowners, old buildings in town that do not live here, that keep rents artificially high, and you've had some past success in that regard. I would hope you would share some of those secrets with us.
You bet. Out-of-town landlords are a favorite topic.
Or in-town, yeah, we have some in-town ones, too, that we should try to work with. All right, well, I think we've expressed it here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. I don't know business tonight. I know Laura and Kevin, you have an item to bring. Is there any other new business to come before the consul, before we go to Laura and Kevin? And with that, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, two separate items, but related. The first is an update on the proposal that the city has made to Whitman County for the provision of misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor prosecution, adjudication, and incarceration services. So, just to update you on this, currently, we're paying 347,000 a year under the expired interlocal agreement that we've continued to honor. What we have proposed is that that be increased by 53,000 a year to 400,000 a year. The only change in the other terms of the existing interlocal agreement is we've previously required Whitman County to provide reports to us, statistical data on the number of prosecutions, the number of days of incarceration, the disposition of Pullman's misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. And they have been unable to do that because of staffing issues and budget issues. So, we would, our proposal was that we would delete that requirement from the, from the interlocal, since we recognize that they can't provide it. So, that's just an update on that. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to offer it. We've not received a counterproposal from the county as of yet, but certainly are proceeding in good faith with the negotiations and recognize the need to get that expired agreement updated. Okay, so seeing no questions. Then the other issue, the separate issue, I understand that they get blended in the public, but the separate issue is the request from the county that we provide space for them in this building after Pullman, the city moves into the new city hall, that we continue to provide district court space. And you'll remember, back in February, Kevin provided some data that will go into the city's setting of a proposed lease rate. So, we've got some additional information to add to that based on the proposal that we made to the county and the feedback, it was a verbal proposal, and the feedback that we've gotten verbally from them, that they'd like to see something different. So, the proposal that we had, based on the numbers that were given, was that we would continue to allow the county to occupy the space on Tuesdays and Thursdays for court, and then the same office space that they currently occupy. We would continue the long practice of charging them zero rent. We, the proposal did ask that, because they would be the only occupants of the building, that they would be responsible for the utilities, that the services aren't going to be on except for anyone else, and currently, the city has always paid those utilities for the county as part of the existing lease, and that they would continue to bear their expenses of telephone line and equipment, and internet service and equipment. In addition, because of the fact that your Public Works Director has indicated that there's a good possibility that there may be capital repairs that would have to be made if we keep the building occupied and open, what we proposed was that in the event those type of repairs have to happen, so the HVAC system goes out, and it's, they can't occupy the building because there's no heat. We asked that the county cost share in that, and that they pay 50%, and we would pay 50% of any repairs that we have to do. of any repairs that we have to do. That's, we've already factored in, from your February report Kevin gave you, the estimate of what the ongoing O&M would be, and the city would continue to bear that cost as it has. So, zero rent, they pay the utilities and their expenses, and cost-sharing if we have to do any capital repair in order to allow them to continue to occupy the building. So the feedback that we received from Mr. Petrovic was that he did not think the Board of County Commissioners would be minimal to that. So what Kevin has done is provide, has come up with some additional calculations on, if one of those capital expenditures were required, what would that look like, and what would that cost? So we've got, you have, those are all factors that go into you determining what the minimum price would be that you would lease real estate. So, but this is all part of that as a result of a Supreme Court decision. This is something you have to discuss and hear about in public before you can then go into executive session to actually discuss the minimum price that you're willing to offer real estate at. So, with that, I turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Laura. So what I did today was I took a look at what are the capital projects that may come up with this building over the short term. And it looks like you've got a copy of the spreadsheet calculation I did. So, I had four items, city hall roof replacement, which is in our CIP program right now, and that's the amount. I looked at remaining HVAC replacement. We did the boilers recently, but there's still a fairly large HVAC component. This is a rough estimate of what that might be. Elevator upgrades are something LNI is looking at as far as legislation goes, so that's on our radar. And I just put miscellaneous, you know, we've done a lot of exterior work on the building in recent years, so that's in pretty good shape. And then I prorated, based on square footage of district court versus the overall square footage, the same as I had done with the earlier calculation for maintenance and operation costs, and came up with $156,490 as a rough estimate of kind of what those capital costs might look like, assuming those projects happen. And I'd be happy to answer questions about it.
You talked earlier about a roof that was about in the $300,000 range, did you, one time?
Yeah, that's the $264,000.
Okay.
That's what we have in CIP, so that's a rough estimate of what that would be.
So, I know, I think it was a couple of years ago, maybe five, we had some challenges with leaking in the garage. Is that, is there...
So the pavers that are out front, there's actually a membrane underneath those, so the leaking has basically stopped as of, it's been at least seven or eight years.
Unless trucks drive on the...
Right.
And that was fixed.
We fixed the membrane.
We want to thank Dee for really, you know, cracking the whip and getting that done. So, and of course Kevin for ordering the whole project to be done, so thank you.
Other comments?
I just wanted to reiterate that, so these are estimates of what might have to happen, but the proposal was expressly that it's only, these aren't projects that the city is intending to go forward with. They would only go forward with them if something happened that made the space, not a residential place, but uninhabitable, so that the county couldn't use it. So, those are just potential expenses that might be coming down the road. The other term I forgot to call out was that the proposal was a two-year term, two-year calendar term. It would be effective January 1 of 2020, and go through 12/31 of 2021. And that's the same term also that we offered for the interlocal agreement.
Would they have a, kind of a cutoff date where we would need to discuss renewal?
Yeah, thank you. That, absolutely. We would have to provide them with notice in time. Gary Petrovic indicated that they'd need to have notice, no later than, I think he said June 1. We suggested May 1, because their fiscal year is July 1, so they need to budget. So, if it would terminate 12/31 of '21, unless we negotiated together an extension of that, or we notified them that we were willing to give them an additional year or additional time, it all depends on what the city council decides to do with the building ultimately.
Real, yeah, real...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know there was discussions before about security needs. Is that something that would need to be discussed as far as...
The expectation is that that's on the tenant. We wouldn't make any improvements unless we were forced to make them in order to keep it available for their use. But no, it wouldn't come with any additional tenant improvements, which means if they determined, the district court determined that they needed to install those security measures, that they would be responsible for that.
Okay. Anne?
I just have a question about the percentages that the county would pay for repairs and maintenance. In your document, it says 50%, and then, but Kevin's number is prorated, so...
Oh, it's prorated by square feet that they would occupy. So, yeah, 50% of the cost attributable to the space they're occupying.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Al?
So, we did make an offer to the county.
Yes, we did, on May 15.
On May 15, and then did we hear back from them?
Then, a request from Gary Petrovic, that the Board of County Commissioners, we've been negotiating as staff, right? So he did send a response, asked, saying that the Board of County Commissioners would like the request in writing, since we as staff don't negotiate with the elected officials. That was turned over to Mayor Johnson, and he was out of town. But I know that subsequently, Adam spoke with Gary and told him that, and there was a discussion about that they, he didn't think they'd be responsible. Gary let us know when we talked to him on the 15th, that he didn't think the Commissioners would accept that lease proposal. But again, we haven't received a counter, other than the request that we come up with some different offer.
So we've made, we made an effort to do something, and we haven't heard back, more or less.
Nothing official, other than to bring a different offer.
The offer that we provided wasn't going to likely be acceptable.
So wouldn't the next likely step be that they would prepare an upper-counter offer? So we would sort of know...
That would have been my expectation, instead of...
Reading about it in the news.
Well, no, but I mean, no, seriously, I just, because I guess we don't know what they don't like about it. So how should we retool it if we're not sure what parts of it there...
Well, when we talked to Gary on the 15th, it was Chief Jenkins and I talked to him via telephone on the 15th. His comment in terms of sharing the capital cost was, well, unless we, similar to what was said in the paper, unless the county had some type of ownership interest in the building, we don't think we should have to do that. And our response was, well, the city would not have an occupant in the building but for your request to continue to provide district court services in the city of Pullman. So, that we thought that that was fair and reasonable cost-sharing between the two, and that we'd take it back to the County Commissioners.
Which is a established project. I mean, we don't own the gymnasiums of the school district, but we share, because we use them for rec, we share 50% of the cost to maintain them. We've replaced roofs at Sunnyside, we've done some other things like that, because we use the gymnasiums. And that's just, we don't own it, but we share the use, which is the same thing we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
If there's no other further comments, then are you okay for... Okay. Just double-check with the attorney. We're going to adjourn this meeting, and then convene an executive session to confer with legal counsel representing the city concerning a lawful litigation that has been specifically threatened, which the city, the governing body, a member acting in its official capacity, is likely to become a party of, and to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease. We will, 8:39, we will convene at 8:45 in executive session, and for a period of conference.